...of the thirty-fifth council of the city of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Terbrack?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes, additions? Hearing none. Then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now would you please stand for the invocation? Actually, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation on a god indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting. When you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And seeing no rush to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you read, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Approve of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on May 5th, 2014. Approval of the warrant, matter of approving warrant number twelve seventy-eight.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Kadakel with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes, corrections, additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one in tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, then we move on to item number two. Please read item number two.
Resolution number R twelve fourteen, matter of approving the request amendment to the Oakland County Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment Resolution.
Is there a motion to approve R twelve fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and to members of the public. Thank you for joining us this evening. Under this item, we are looking to amend the county's solid waste plan. And basically what it's doing is that it, to allow the Fiero plant in Pontiac to be transformed into a waste transfer station processing facility. Now, with us this evening is the general manager for SACRA. We did hold a meeting not too long ago to review this amendment. The board did agree to approve and recommend this resolution to the city council. However, there was one modification. We feel that the modification will have no impact to the overall resolution. Just to give you a little bit more background, in addition to it being transformed into a waste transfer station, RISO, the company that will be working on this project, also intends to build a single-stream recycling center along with a drop-off recycling facility for the Pontiac residents. And all of the facilities on the old Fiero plant are targeted to increase tonnage going to landfills and improve our county's carbon footprint by reducing related truck traffic and fuel consumption. The county board members also feel that, that in addition to meeting the county's solid waste environmental plan goals, that the RISO project also supports the recently announced initiative by Governor Schneider to enhance and improve recycling efforts in the state of Michigan. As I said, we do have with us this evening our general manager, Mr. Jeff McKean. I've asked him to join us and perhaps give us a little bit of more background on this item. And also, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we do have a representative from Mr. RISO, Mr. Jim Hartley. And if he would like to add any statements as well, please do so. With that, Mr. McKean, welcome.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. In addition to what Jane said, I'd like to point out that the resolution in front of you has already been approved by the Oakland County Solid Waste Planning Group, by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. And now RISO's at the stage of going to each and every community in Oakland County to obtain their approval. They're required to obtain two-thirds, approval of two-thirds of the communities in the county in order for this amendment to become effective. This amendment really has no direct impact on SACRA. The reason why I'm here tonight is that SACRA, then SACRA twelve SACRA communities feel the Oakland County Waste, the Oakland County Solid Waste Plan is sadly out of date. It was adopted in 2000. And if you think of what's changed since 2000 in this county, it's almost night and day difference. The county has been very reluctant to redo the plan, to update the plan, to reflect current conditions. And we feel this is an important opportunity to express our position of the county that they should update the plan. The resolution you have before you today is identical to that approved by the Solid Waste Planning Group and by the county commission, except we've added a few words right at the very end. And if you've got your resolution in front of you, it's the last, oh, two and a half lines that say and recommends that Oakland County fully update the 2000 solid waste plan in accordance with state law after the current amendment process is completed. So we don't have any, any argument with the amendment or with the RISO facility. We just think it's appropriate to send this signal to the county that they need to update their solid waste plan, which is sadly outdated.
Very good. Are there any questions from Mr. McKean? Seeing none, then thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Thank you, members, and thank you again graciously for accepting the opportunity to review this. Actually, I, I think that both individuals have stated the issue at hand very thoroughly. And as far as the amendment, RISO has generally the same philosophy about the county's, whatever would happen with the county doing a revisitation on, on those issues. And as far as SACRA goes, all, all agreements and charters with, with SACRA are thoroughly in place, which I think is, has been represented. Other than that, I think we, everything has been stated very well.
Well, thank you also for being here.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hartley? Seeing none, then thank you. This seems to be a fairly straightforward issue. And if there isn't anything else, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R twelve fourteen?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Presentation, matter of receiving a verbal report from Sharmila Mukuchi of Parsons Brinkerhoff and Brad Strater of LSL Planning regarding the Woodward Alternatives Analysis.
Is there a motion to receive this report?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive by Councilmember Baker with support by Mayor Pro Tim Terbrack. Mr. Sessa?
Council, I know how anxious you are to hear the latest update regarding this, this item. And with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Sharmila and, and Brad. Oh, Brad, I'm sorry, I didn't see you come in. They will both give us a brief presentation. Can we just turn off the lights a little bit, or are we all set? It's, should be already loaded. At least I hope it is. Uh-oh.
It's set up.
Okay. I know, I was gonna say, did, did you bring a flash drive or anything?
We did not.
Okay.
How about, we can, we have a backup.
Okay.
So, but I think since Nancy has ordered it in time to upload it, I'm gonna try to see if we could find it. Should be good.
How about while Sharmila loads it up, I'll, I'll start, give you some overview of what we're gonna be presenting when we get around. Again, Brad Strater from LSL Planning, and we're a subconsultant working with Sharmila and Parsons Brinkerhoff. And in the audience is Dan Beard, who has helped put together a lot of the graphics. And we've had represent, representatives of Berkeley on the steering committee, Steve Baker and Amy Vanson. And we've had a lot of meetings almost every month. And during that time, we've looked at alternatives for what type of system would we have? Where would stations go? Where would the routing be? And where would the rapid transit be within Woodward? And we've given you, I think, a couple of updates, planning commission and council, and sometimes with Amy. And tomorrow, we have our steering committee meeting, and the hope is the steering committee will endorse moving forward with a locally preferred alternative. And the locally preferred alternative is showing conceptually how this project would lay out and making recommendation to the, the rapid transit, the Transit Authority, Regional Transit Authority, so that, once they have a CEO, I think they're doing interviews this week, that this project can move forward. And in the last couple of weeks, we've had meetings with representatives of all the communities up and down the Woodward corridor, including Amy and a couple of your planning commission members had a meeting in our office last week to go through some of the finite details and explain to them, and the feeling was it'd be good to come and explain to you what this alternatives analysis includes, and then things that come later. The public workshops we had, you know, were well-attended in Berkeley, and all of us, including me, wanted to jump ahead to the details. What are the stations gonna look like? What are the vehicles gonna look like? What are the fares gonna be? How are you gonna get across at these different locations? And that is all coming in the future phase. So I know it can be kind of frustrating, but there's a process with the Federal Transit Administration we have to go through to kind of check boxes off and move it forward. So some of the questions you probably have and that your planning commissioners have are good questions, and they will be addressed in the next phase. The next phase looks at detailed design and engineering and impacts. This is more, think of it as like the master plan for Berkeley, and the next phase is like the zoning ordinance. It gets into the nitty-gritty details of what you can do and the, and the precision that would go forward. So that's where we are now moving the concept forward. And our goal with the steering committee is to have a unanimous endorsement. So that we can show RTA and Federal Transit Administration that the corridor is unified. They have a perception over the years that we're not unified in this region on transit. And we're really facing a lot of competition from other metropolitan organizations and, and groups around the country for the Federal Transit Administration dollars. And so we think it's really important to move this forward. I know the mayor at the League of Cities meeting met the Director of Transportation, and this project is on their radar at the federal level, and that was reinforced by your conversations. And we just, our hope is to show that the communities are unified. A couple of us met with Bloomfield Hills last week, so Bloomfield Hills has been kind of the quiet participant because they're not sure that their residents and businesses really need rapid transit. But they, but the City Commission of Bloomfield Hills last Tuesday unanimously passed a motion to move the project forward and said they're on board and wanted to show the support to all the communities. So you're kind of the next-to-last communities. We haven't heard officially from Birmingham, so we'll be meeting, I think, with Birmingham within the next couple of weeks, but that's the, the target tomorrow. All right, so keep filling time.
Keep going.
All right, so what we're gonna show you, or I'll describe it to you, Sharmila and I will describe it to you in words, are, we have four parts of this alternatives analysis. First is we call it the mode, and that is initially, a decision was made largely because of funding to do bus rapid transit. Or as we heard at the Berkeley meetings, call it rolling rapid transit or rapid transit. Don't say bus rapid transit. So that was a decision made about nine months ago, to be a bus rapid transit. And we've got some slides of like a bus rapid transit 101 that I think we've, we've upgraded from what you saw previously. The second part of the discussion is the alignment, and the alignment is routing. And we'll cover this more quickly, but in the routing options, there were four places we looked at maybe going off Woodward. And now we can show you what those were.
Yay. And I think now that Brad almost gave away the whole presentation, we are gonna try to repeat some of those and perhaps answer any questions. In terms of time, as we get started, do you have a timeframe? Because we both tend to talk a lot.
Really, it's fine. You have, you have our time. I mean, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't want you to go for hours, but. If you do, can you just get the mic so that we can record you?
Oh, absolutely.
You can pull it off. You can take it off. Just change. There you go.
Okay, that's perfect.
Thank you.
So Brad and I will be jointly presenting this. We'll talk, he already gave a good part of my intro away, so I'm gonna start at this point. The mode. Selection of mode was perhaps, it's an exercise in kind of cost, feasibility, what makes sense in the region right now. And also keeping in mind that this is gonna be the first leg of the, of a larger rapid transit system. So we had to keep all of those considerations in mind and not just have the, what we really want, because everybody wants light rail. I mean, let's be honest here. But in terms of, we combine the needs and then kind of see what could be the best alternative at this point. Evaluation of stations, I'm not gonna give that away because there was a lot of discussion, and Brad very effectively led that throughout this alternatives analysis process. Wanted to give a little bit of background about the project before we move forward, and these are the four items we're gonna focus today. Mode, alignment is the routing, as Brad said, cross-sections, we're gonna come to that, so not gonna spend a lot of time on it. So we started in July, July of 2012. Twenty-seven mile-long corridor goes from Detroit River all the way to Pontiac, eleven municipalities. Kind of gives you a sense of the different dynamics and the needs, socioeconomic, transportation and otherwise, and different expectations of, of the communities. So Wayne County and Oakland combine all of that in the context of this study. I think all of you know, so I don't, typically we say these things at the public meeting, that transit currently provided by SMART and DDOT, but there's no real feasible option, nothing that competes with auto. So that's sort of kind of our given, travel time by transit, it makes it completely non-competitive. So our mandate was essentially when Woodward Light Rail failed, federal government sort of looked at the region and thought that Woodward Avenue is the most promising corridor, and I wanted to give a little bit of background in Berkeley's sort of special role in that. So a lot of the South Oakland communities, including Berkeley, came together, Steve's took active part in that, kind of came together. They looked at the outstanding needs and they realized that we, they need to do something about it. And working with SEMCOG, the MPO, sort of the funding structure and for this project was put in place. And that was early 2012. And then in July 2012, through a very competitive bidding process, Parsons Brinkerhoff was selected and, along with four other firms, including Brad's LSL. I cannot see you, so that's just very difficult. So I'm gonna stand here and maybe talk. So with that, our first task was to figure out the study's purpose and need. How, what, what's the purpose and need for this project? Because in the federal context, when FTA reviews the project against all other competing projects from the nation, they have to have some standard metrics to kind of differentiate different projects with. And the first order of business is to sort of establish the study's purpose and need. So that's what we did. There's a major documentation that happens behind the scenes that essentially substantiates the purpose and need. But basically, in simple terms, it was to provide a rapid transit option that's most visible at this point in terms of cost and also suitable for a land use along this twenty-seven mile-long corridor where there's already a lot of dispersion has taken place based on previous decisions. So with that, BRT was selected as the mode. We talked a little bit about different criteria that we looked at. Flexibility was a big, big factor. We really understood that bus rapid transit provides the need at this point because it's very flexible. Unlike rail, it's gonna be more cost competitive. It can cater to all these different destinations that Brad's gonna talk more about later on. And it's gonna better integrate with existing bus system. So those are some of our, the factors that we looked at in study's purpose and need. BRT, or the rolling rapid transit, sort of could look very similar to something like this. It's rail-like in its amenities and features. And it depends on the level of BRT that gets selected. But what we currently have in mind and what we are planning for is very similar to something like this. It's, this is, I think this is Las Vegas BRT. No, this is, yeah. And this is a snapshot from Cleveland, the Arts District in Cleveland. This is their fair, fair box and sort of the off, off-board ticketing that typically comes with bus rapid transit, which makes it, again, another amenity that's sort of similar to rail. And it also adds to the, helps the travel time. If you're not kind of fiddling with your fare, then there's a better chance of being on time. This is Cleveland, Cleveland did in Midwest, Cleveland did a most successful BRT system that we can easily compare to. Steve and Amy, they both went on the trip to Cleveland and got to see the system firsthand. This is level boarding. I think that also another factor that makes it very rail-like, so ADA accessible. You can easily get on and off the vehicle and allows for faster boarding as well. We talk about that again. Dedicated lanes, that's perhaps one of the most important factor in keeping the travel time and maintaining the speed. We are for the, our corridor's much longer than Cleveland. Cleveland's about ten miles, likely less than ten miles for the first, first part of the health line. And our corridor's twenty-seven mile long. So for most part, in certain cases, we have to make deviations. We have to deviate and cannot keep it all center-running or dedicated at the same time. Because our ridership varies too, all along the corridor. So we, kind of keeping that in mind, so there are some adjustments. But for most part, our BRT system that we're trying to recommend is gonna have its own exclusive guideway. It's gonna have its fixed guideway with, very similar to, to this. In terms of demarcation, it could either be marked or it could actually be, you're gonna see more in the cross-sections how it could actually look like if it's center-running. So priority at traffic signals, that's another sort of major features, and this is Cleveland's Transit Signal Priority System. What it does is it kind of gives priority, signal gives priority to the, to the transit vehicle. And in some cities, they also give priority to other competing transit. But in this case, we're, we are thinking BRT is gonna get the travel time advantage. Again, a little bit about the station design, could take on very many different formats. Sometimes with center-running stations, we call them paired stations. You can see the one in the back. So it, it allows you, again, I think, aside of being climate-controlled and kind of much better than a regular bus shelter, I think it also has very similar to, it looks like a light rail station to me. Some of the benefits of BRT. We, I know it's pretty basic, but I wanted to go over this. It significantly enhances the public transit system compared to what exists now. It also provides an opportunity to eventually, if the ridership builds up and the system becomes so viable, it has a better chance of going into a rail system. So it allows you to develop the transitional ridership and move on to the next level. It serves as the foundation for the regional rapid transit system. As much as we want transit, we understand the challenges and to get that implemented. And this clearly serves as the first leg of a larger system. I think if this becomes the first system, I think we have a lot to be proud of, and thanks to all of your good work. Job, some of the three major parts of the purpose and need was kind of connecting residents to jobs. That's one of the major mandates of this project. Shopping opportunities, there's a lot of thriving downtown along the corridor, and we feel that retail would boost quite a bit along with access to jobs. Land use decision-making would come in, I'm not gonna give it away because Brad's gonna talk a little bit more about what you see today as part of the locally preferred alternative. There's more to come on that. The flexibility that I talk about in BRT allows the system to get built up as we continue to get ridership. And with that, I'm gonna give to Brad and talk a little bit about the stations.
All right. Sure. So the first thing is alignments, and alignments is routing. And so we started with a line like that Sharmila showed from Pontiac to Detroit, all on Woodward. But as we moved into the state, we realized there was a lot of desire to, for going off Woodward, into downtown Birmingham, downtown Berkeley, downtown Royal Oak, different options in Pontiac. And then when we get into Detroit, if we stay on Woodward, we're on the same line with the DDOT buses and the SMART buses and the M1 rail and the parade and everything else. So do we stay on Woodward or not? So we've spent a lot of time looking at alternatives to being on Woodward. And the preferred, the recommended alternative tomorrow will show two options in Pontiac that are very much the same. If you know Pontiac, one would be on Pike Street, one might be going through what they call Lot Nine, a redevelopment area. Another might go a block north of Pike Street. So would we serve the Amtrak Transit Center directly or not? There's pros and cons. We lose some ridership, but we, FTA likes to see connecting with the station. So right now, we're showing both of those moving forward. We had two alternatives to serve more directly into Berkeley. One was to come off Woodward and go down Coolidge to Twelve Mile and then Twelve Mile back to Woodward and vice versa. And the other option was to continue down Coolidge to Eleven Mile and go over to Woodward. So both of those were modeled, we looked at them on a bus tour with the committee. When we go the Twelve Mile, we, it takes about, adds four minutes of time to the, one of our goals was to be rapid, rapid. So we added four minutes and we lost about a thousand riders. So that option was dropped. It was even more time lost when we went down to Eleven Mile, about seven to eight minutes of additional time and didn't pick up the same riders by going off Woodward. So the, going into Berkeley, off Woodward was dropped. Royal Oak was another matter. Do we stay on Woodward or are we going to Royal Oak? And we had four or five different alternatives to go into Royal Oak. And just in the last couple of weeks, we've sort of refined it to say, the recommendation tomorrow that we'll be making to the steering committee is to put forward two options to RTA for the next level. One was to stay on Woodward, and the other is to go into Royal Oak. And if you're coming from the south, to go up Washington and then over at Lincoln to Lafayette, and then Lafayette to a little bit of Sherman, and then Eleven Mile. And the reason to do that is we, we're still a couple of blocks from Main Street. We're, we pick up the LCC students, we're at the Amtrak and Transit Center, but we avoid the railroad crossing. So we don't lose as much time. So that seems to work. Huntington Woods prefers that we stay on Woodward with all the vehicles. Royal Oak prefers that we go into downtown Royal Oak with all the vehicles. So right now, we're, we're promoting, moving it forward to the FTA and the RTA to continue to look at both of those. But with our idea is that you'd have some vehicles that would stay on Woodward, like express vehicles, and others that would go into downtown Royal Oak. And they'd be labeled like you have an express or a local bus, the same type of a thing. Maybe after-hours goes more to Royal Oak and, and there's enough smartphone technology that you could know which one. So that's, we feel that we serve both communities and the ridership needs of both by doing that. So that's where we are. And in Detroit, it's become complicated with all the administrative issues in Detroit to have Detroit weigh in on their preferred alternative. Right now, we're showing the options of going up and down CAS. One of the complications there, it's sort of narrow, we've got a lot of on-street parking. And Detroit would like to put on-street bike lanes on part of CAS. So there's some challenges there. Another option is to be, they call it a one-way couplet. We would be southbound on CAS, northbound on John R. So that has some benefits. It's easier to reduce the traffic conflicts, but we sort of split our economic development potential. So if you keep it on, on one street, you have a little bit more synergy than splitting it. Or the other option is to stay on Woodward. And then, so those are options. We continue to move forward into the steering committee tomorrow. We're gonna, we've removed some of the alternatives, but we're gonna suggest moving two of them forward to the next stage of review.
If I may add something to that, the city of Detroit options? Yes. City of Detroit options, clearly, when we started this study, our goal was to have the alignment, consider the all-Woodward option. Woodward has the highest ridership. It completely logically makes sense to have it on Woodward. As we move forward, M1 rail became more of a reality. It was going to hap, going to happen, and that's the assumption that we are moving forward with. And with that, if you put the option two, which brings it down on CAS, that does not give the travel time advantage because it's sharing with parking, it's sharing with buses. Parking cannot be removed, that's a major issue in midtown because they have developed quite a bit. With that, we came to option three, which is, option three and four are very similar. One includes taking I-94 Bridge, the service drive, one doesn't. So option three and four, it allows travel time advantage because you come down on CAS as, on an exclusive guideway, and then you go back on John R, also an exclusive guideway. So it has travel time advantage. There is an argument, as Brad said, that that distributes economic development. And the other, in favor of that option is, it, it's, distributes economic development, and that's a positive thing. It could actually be argued that, you know, both CAS and John R could actually benefit from that. It's going to provide better access to the hospitals, and it also will take away the conflict with M1 rail. with M1 rail. There are some legibility issues, system getting divided on two roadways, so we need to take that into account and figure out how we could design or mitigate some of these issues in design.
And by legibility, we mean people might want to go northbound and they're on CAS and don't know where they are, so we just need good wayfinding or something else. So that's why both are moving forward. So we did look at different alignments, including into Berkeley, but that didn't test. So we knew that serving Berkeley is important, we've heard from you, we've heard from your representatives on the steering committee and from your city manager and from your residents. So that's the alignment. But as we move forward to stations, we've got 26 stations over 27 miles. And the goal of our steering committee was to be rapid. And we've been sort of balancing, ever since we started, how do we stay rapid and still have enough stations that it's convenient to people? And while they show up as a mile station, it's actually because of the angle of Woodward, it's a little bit more than a mile. And if some of you have been on other bus rapid transit systems, they often have a station every, you know, quarter of a mile, every half-mile. When that was modeled, we really lose our being rapid. And so we start to lose ridership and it becomes more bus-like. And so the steering committee said, let's keep it rapid. So we faced that challenge, keep it rapid, but have convenient stations. So generally, we've looked at a station every mile. We're not having necessarily every mile where the densities get lower in Bloomfield Hills and Bloomfield Township there. We're talking about spacing more than a mile, but generally, and in Detroit, a little bit closer than a mile. But generally, we're looking at mile, stations a mile apart. And so the criteria to determine where should stations be, where, how much ridership do we get? Is there density there now or is there potential for more density to support ridership? If there's not density of ridership now, is there potential for park-and-ride or they sometimes call it kiss-and-ride, where you, a place that you can drop your spouse or child off and they can get on the BRT or on the station, but a way to generate ridership that way? How do we interact with crosstown routes? So right now, one of the main crosstown routes in terms of ridership is the 11 Mile, so that was one of the reasons 11 Mile was selected, connecting to those transit centers in Pontiac and Royal Oak. Birmingham wanted us to look in Troy at connecting to that transit center, but we really, really would lose a lot of travel time going over there. We've talked about maybe there could be a shuttle system, just like potentially in, in Berkeley, there could be a shuttle system to take you to the Berkeley Rapid Transit Station. So those are the type of the things, and we also get the community input. And so through that discussion, maybe hit the next slide, there have been different versions that showed a station, and that, right now, the stations are a dot on a map. And when we showed 13 Mile, it wouldn't be at 13 Mile. It likely would be a little bit south of Coolidge, potentially could be a little bit north of 13 Mile, but generally, when these dots are on a map, think of it as maybe three to four blocks north or south. When we do more detailed analysis in the next phase of interaction with traffic operations and the ease of getting people across the street. So 13 Mile to serve the Beaumont redevelopment was kind of a given. 12 Mile frankly has been on the bubble. The cemetery at the northwest quadrant and the shrine at the southeast quadrant don't generate a lot of ridership now, at least in the modeling. There's some potential that you could have some additional development at the other two quadrants. But we, so we had some runs without a 12 Mile station and we picked up a little bit of time, but we only lost, you know, about 40 seconds of time. So when we modeled it to add a station, adds about 40 seconds more to decelerate people on and off and to pick it up and thought to serve Berkeley, we needed to have a 12 Mile station. So right now, in case you'd heard otherwise, because a couple of your planning commissioners had, because we had modeled a lot of different scenarios, the recommendation tomorrow is to have a station at 12 Mile, which likely would be a little bit south of 12 Mile. We also looked at Catawba, there's sort of some pros and cons to Catawba, but the model showed is if we had one at Catawba, we would dilute the ridership at 12 Mile and then neither one had enough ridership to really meet the FTA guidelines. So the idea is, and we talked to some of your planning commissioners, there could be redevelopment in that area, like at the, certain sites could be redeveloped in the future, a park-and-ride, so stations could be added, mostly at the half-mile points in the future, a station could be added through the next study process or even after it's operational, once the ridership builds up. But we're not recommending one at Catawba at this point. We are recommending one at 11 Mile to serve Huntington Woods, the southern part of Berkeley and to connect with that crosstown routing. And again, right now, we're showing going into Royal Oak at the Transit Center and maybe also at LCC. And then 10 Mile is the zoo on the north side of 696. So that's the recommendations for the stations, in particular, in the Berkeley area.
And the 10 Mile has a different symbol because it's also a park-and-ride, proposed park-and-ride. Our legend doesn't quite show that.
And this, this, DDA of Royal Oak has some property, you might have heard about the development proposals across Woodward from the zoo. And there's some talk, there could be a land swap, so we could have park-and-ride, MDOT owns some of that property and could have some park-and-ride right on Woodward. Been some general discussions about maybe using some property at the zoo for park-and-ride. So we do think that could be a good place for park-and-ride, getting people as they're coming off of 696. And then we showed a couple of earlier images of stations, but this is just intended to show that there could be a lot of variety of stations. There may be one design type, there may, there's probably going to be a larger station where the ridership is going to be higher and a smaller mini-station. These are just some different images. I think the steering committee liked a modern vehicle and a modern-looking station, so that's probably where we'd go. But some of the, most of these are going to be in the center, as I'll show you in a minute, but some could be on the edges and this is just to show you that, that would all come later. There's also a possibility that they could be branded, so the DDA could adopt the Berkeley one and do something there, or Beaumont could adopt the 13 Mile and do something there. So you'd have the basic structure, but there may be some allowance to sort of personalize each station, either with a name or artwork or even some architectural amenities. And then cross-sections. Cross-sections has been pretty challenging on this. So cross-sections means where in Woodward would the rapid transit go? And we talked with you about this last time I was here a little bit. And you might recall that we said on the edge or the right lane where the buses go is not the preferred because it, there's too much delay, you can't be rapid, you're interrupted with all the vehicles turning in and out of the driveways and the streets. So then we got to where in the center would it run? The center is safer, you can be more rapid, people only have to cross one side of Woodward, there's can be cost savings by having one station to serve both sides of the street. But our Michigan indirect left turns have never been integrated into a rapid transit project before. So it poses some challenges, how do we do that? And so we've got a lot of different cross-sections up and down the corridor, but maybe hit the next slide. For Berkeley in particular, this is your typical cross-section. Now, you've got four travel lanes in each direction, 12-foot lanes and a 40-foot wide median. And so what we're proposing is that the rapid transit would go in the center of the median. The center of the median allows us to really pick up a lot of speed, avoid a lot of congestion, avoid some of the conflict with Michigan indirect left turns. One of the things that we heard from some of your representatives and especially from Birmingham and Ferndale is a worry about the loss of the green in the median. And so you have to take some study, but if you look at this, the proposal right now is there's three travel lanes and we've taken one travel lane and made it green, so that we've recaptured some green. If we did, if, if we didn't do that, if we kept four lanes in each direction, we would only have about an eight-foot median on either side and that wouldn't be wide enough to be landscaped. So that's one of the balances, this is all balances, to accept some reduction of street capacity to retain some of that green.
And we had meetings with MDOT on that, multiple meetings with MDOT on that. And perhaps one of the most encouraging discussion that we've had is MDOT overwhelmingly, the leadership now supports BRT and median-running BRT to, to maintain speed. So there's a lot of support there at the agency as well.
And there would be places where, I mean, candidly, there's a lot more work to go into the design, but places like when you approach 13 Mile, that because of the volumes on 13 Mile and the throughput, you would have to add the fourth lane back in and the median would be very narrowed. So this wouldn't be consistent along every block. At some blocks, we would just have to add the lane back in. So one of the questions we heard, actually at a Berkeley public workshop, a number of people said, how is this going to work with Michigan indirect left turns? And so by the next workshop, two nights later, we, Dan did these drawings, Dan and Shamilah and I, so here's how it would work, and I don't think we had shown you these before. So this is the rapid transit in the, go back.
Yeah.
Running in the, in the middle, and you see those kind of orange-colored cars that are going northbound on Woodward. So as the vehicle comes, it would trigger those signals. So the signals would turn red, so the vehicles in that Michigan U-turnaround would stop, let the BRT continue, it would get priority. And once the BRT is passed, then it would be green and they would continue through the median, as shown in the next slide.
Sorry.
So once the BRT is passed, then the cars would continue their maneuver. To make this work, we're going to have to close some of the median crossovers, maybe a third of them and in some places, half the median crossovers. So we'll have to lengthen the deceleration lane. So there's a lot of engineering yet, yet to make it work. But that's kind of the preferred alternative, is in the center, reduces the conflict. If we were, if we had the BRT running on the lane next to the median, every time people want to use a Michigan indirect left turn, they'd have to cross over the, the rapid transit lane at an angle and we, it would be not as safe as this. This way, they're crossing at 90 degrees.
And the storage lane where the cars essentially are lining up to cross, that given the width of Woodward Avenue, for most part, the storage lane would be enough that it would allow to safely cross, make that turn.
And we could have shown a station, but the idea there, the station would likely be either on either side or in the middle and the BRT would wrap around it. And you can see at the top there, there'd be pedestrian signal. So people, once they're, when they're going to the BRT station or once it lets them off, all the traffic would stop and the pedestrians would be able to cross Woodward with a protected signal before traffic could proceed. So that's kind of where we are with the, the recommendation we'll have for the committee tomorrow on the locally preferred alternative to move down to the RTA and FTA. So what comes next? I think we kind of covered this when I song and danced at the beginning. But the next steps would be more detailed design of what the, the stations will look like, where precisely they go, north or south of those dots, getting into the vehicles. We think we can stay within the existing right-of-way, but to make sure we can fit everything in the right-of-way. And a lot of the work frankly is going to be that engineering analysis on how this will work with the Michigan indirect left turns and also cost. So going in the center of the median works the best to meet the goals of steering committee, but it's more expensive than just adding transit onto the existing lanes. And so there's a, you know, cost and the cost benefits will all have to be looked at as we move forward. And the idea is that the RTA would be looking to go out for a, a regional millage in 2016 because while FTA will pay for the capital costs, design and construction, they need to see that this area will support the BRT in terms of operations. And you may have seen, some of you have get cranes, there was an article, I think, last week on the Silverline project in Grand Rapids where they did the same thing, the, the six communities there voted a millage, both of our firms worked on that project and voted a millage to support the rapid transit and it's supposed to open in August. It's under, the stations are built right now. So we would not be the first in Michigan, but hopefully will be the second in Michigan.
And their BRT is BRT light, which is slightly, and one we are proposing or intending to propose, would be a higher rate of, sort of, capable of the stations and the alignments that you saw.
So that's an overview and appreciate the time and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And I have one thing to add to this and then we could open up to question and answer. I think the next most, I mean, Brad already talked about the design, but the environmental review would sometimes go hand-in-hand, sometimes slightly before the engineering. And our SEMCOG's intent, if RTA supports, is to sort of expedite the environmental review. So all the impacts that we talked about, we touched upon, all of those impacts would be assessed during the environmental review.
Thank you very much for a very lucid and clear presentation.
Yes.
Are there questions? Discussion? Councilmember Edgar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Why a non-compete with auto? What?
It's probably how I, how I explained it. It's the, currently, the travel time is such, if you, first of all, there's no continuous service by bus right now that goes throughout the day. So there's peak hour service, but if you take DDOT and SMART to go all the way from downtown Detroit to Pontiac, it would take you somewhere like hour and a half. It's crazy, crazy time.
Yeah.
So it's not competitive with travel time.
So the idea was, a couple of things, is how, if you went all the way from Pontiac to Detroit, can we make it as competitive with the car as possible? I think we got it down to, a typical would be 43 minutes, depends where you are, and that's fairly competitive with the car and because we pick up time at the lights. But one thing that Sarah Binkowski, the traffic engineer, did for the steering committee was showed, a lot of people won't take Woodward for that long, they would go I-75. So she did also comparison of I-75 and showed because of all the weather issues and I-75 and congestion, that while some times of the year, you could make that in less than 43 minutes, many times, the rapid transit would be much faster than even I-75. So that's what we were trying to do, is make it time-competitive with the car.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. One more, the door size, when you talked about it being handicapped accessible, is that going to be a larger door size? It was not real clear on the slide, than an, an actual bus?
It is larger.
Yeah, okay, good.
The vehicle is about 60 to 90? 60 to 90 footer. So depending on the specification and typically, these are not all custom-made vehicles, a lot of these, I mean, BRT systems are becoming widely popular and FT is really promoting it. So these are standard specification, we, and it would, it would be wider than the current bus.
Think of it if you've, if you've ridden like Metro in Washington DC or some of the more modern subway systems, where you have a wide door, so multiple people can go out and get in at the same time.
Or even at the airport.
At the airport, yes. And that's what it's like to make it more rapid, yes, much more like what the, yeah.
And then one last one, dedicated lanes on CAS and John R or no?
That would, that would be what we would recommend as part of the LPA. Keep in mind, there's going to be an environmental review phase where all of the impacts and more closer listening in to stakeholders happen, part of the federal mandate. So at that time, if parking becomes a major issue that people cannot sacrifice on, I hope that wouldn't be the case because this is a regional, first leg of a regional rapid transit system. I mean, you would hope that a different compromise could be made, but if that's a factor that prevails, then we have to make some compromise. But it would be on small segments. For most part, it would be exclusive.
And the reason I smiled at the question is on our team call, on our team meetings, that's, we've been asking that question and debating back and forth and that's a very good observation and, yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kiddeckel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick on the famous left-turn lane, Michigan left. You said you were planning on closing some of those, were you going to close all of them? Because the concern I have where you said there would be a red light, you can still turn left on that red, so obviously you'd have to have some kind of signage that says no, no turn on red.
Yes, the idea is to, and we've actually, I think on the map, started looking at where this might be, but eliminating some of them, where, especially where they're closely spaced, so we get them, so we have fewer conflicts with the rapid transit vehicle and for safety. But we haven't decided exactly what the criteria would be and, and for the reasons you said, but you would stop and then continue your movement and we'd have to sign so people know. A, a lot of this is going to take orientation with the drivers and we might even have to phase things in, so the ideal operation may not be what we do at the beginning. We may do like, when they do other rapid transit vehicles, like in Grand Rapids, they have a lot of test vehicles, so people can kind of get used to seeing the vehicle and understand how it works and maybe even monitor that and it might change the way things are signed. But we'll have to pay close attention to that left-turn vehicle exactly.
Thank you.
And this may be a little premature to discuss, but there have been discussions, and it's again premature to discuss at this point, that there may be demonstration projects, just like Brad said, so we may be able to be, bring a vehicle and kind of have a little bit of driver education, not just BRT drivers, but general drivers on the road and to kind of see how they coexist together.
Very good. Anything else? Well, thank you very much for your overall work on this project to begin with and for coordinating with so many groups who are working to move this forward from SEMCOG all the way down and in conjunction with Secretary of Transportation. So this is a major undertaking that is probably 30, 40, 50 years behind where it might have been. But it moves this region forward in a way that I don't think much else can, can have as big an impact. And so thank you for being here tonight as well to present it to our community via cable television.
I just, I wanted to thank you all and for your time, also to Mayor, I personally would be missing your inspiring speeches at our public meetings. So what I was just, wanted to repeat that, but those, those were some really inspiring speeches. So just thank you for all your support hosting the public meetings. And special thanks, she's not here today, but Amy Vanson, she's been very active and had very graciously allowed us to have all our steering committee meetings and made parking free available, which is very important to a lot of people. So we thank City of Berkeley for that.
Thank you both very much. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Resolution number R-1314, matter of supporting the locally preferred transit alternative along the Woodward corridor.
Is it a motion to approve R-1314?
Your Honor, a motion to approve R-1314.
Support.
Being approved by Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Edgar. Being approved by Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I really don't have much to add. I, I really appreciate the presentation this evening. I think they were very thorough. Gave us a good information as to what, what to expect. Obviously, there's still a lot more to take a look at, much more to study. As you said, Your Honor, this project has been years in, in the making and definitely will, will take this region forward. Again, it's just the beginning and I think that, uh, that if this were to be approved, it would bring a lot of positive things to our community. I, I really appreciate the report. I think that in our city, um, we can grow even further. As a matter of fact, uh, talking to staff on, on some of the areas that they were recommending, we can certainly utilize our, our smart buses to help us, uh, bring in our seniors whenever they, if they'd like to go to some of their doctors, we can put them into the, the bus systems. It would not be very far at all. And I think with time, I think that people will be more encouraged to utilize the system as well. It's a very, very good system. So thank you, Your Honor. We are recommending, uh, council considering this resolution. It is one that, I know we've talked about it and we've talked about it and we've attended the meetings and we've supported, but this resolution makes a statement and it says that we support this type of transit alternative.
Very good. Uh, are there any questions? Discussion? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. It, it is with, with great pleasure that, uh, that I would fully support this, uh, this resolution here this evening. As was mentioned, I certainly won't repeat all of the, the great benefits and comments that have been made in terms of the presentation and the value that, that transit can and should bring to, to our region. I'd just instead like to continue that note of gratitude. I'm exceptionally grateful to, to so many folks for all of their work in helping bring us to where we're at today. This is, uh, this is a significant milestone, as you mentioned, just, uh, just the next in a long series of, of milestones that I hope come before us here. But when I think about, um, all those that have been involved in this, not only this, uh, this council and prior councils with active support and participation in the sessions and things, but our city planner, city manager, our planning commission, environmental advisory committee, the Friends of the Parks and Rec Committee, and so many other groups that have been involved and active in, in, um, in raising awareness, helping challenge assumptions, helping clarify conditions and helping us position the city and the region for, for transit options to come. So it's worth great, uh, great, uh, support that I, I look forward to this and, and again, thanks. Thanks to you guys for all that you've done and continue to do. Look forward to the next stage of the journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Before we call the vote, I'll take this opportunity to thank my colleague Steve Baker for his energy and passion for this rolling rapid transit. And we thank you very much. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman? Yes. Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed 2014-2015 annual operating budget and supporting tax rates for the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve holding a public hearing?
Move to approve the public hearing.
Moved by Councilmember Kadakle.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, under this item, this is really the time when we just accept any comments or questions or, uh, any, any other things that, uh, that the public would like to, uh, to make regarding our, our proposed budget. So, Your Honor, that's...
So the microphone is open to the public. And seeing no great charge toward the microphone, then I will declare the public hearing concluded. And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Resolution number R-1414, matter of approving a resolution of the city of the, of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2014-15 through 2020-21 capital improvements plan of the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve R-1414?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
Council, under this item, we work in, in preparation in accordance with Michigan compiled law, section 125.3865, in which it requires that our, our planning commission annually prepare a capital improvements program for the ensuing six years. This program shows the public structures and improvements, usually in, in some type of priority, which the commission's judgment believes that this is needed and or desired. And this is in accordance with, with the resolution states. And obviously, this is something that we hope to undertake within a six-year period. Our, our finance director has been diligent, diligent in putting this, um, this, uh, plan together, together with all, uh, the various department heads who come and, and meet with him to make sure that we have, uh, or that at least that we come together with a plan that meets our needs. So, Your Honor, we are recommending now that the city council consider this resolution.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about the capital improvement plan? I know you've all been through it several times. Uh, Mr. Sessa.
Your Honor, I, I apologize, I forgot to mention. Now, this plan is for a total of six years and just for the you and pub, public out there, this whole plan amounts to over $28 million. Now, it doesn't mean we're all going to do it all at once, but it is a six-year plan and like budgets, it, it has a tendency to, to change depending on, on the needs. But, uh, but again, just so the public will know, it's a six-year plan, $28 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only, it's more of a comment. The fact that we, we have a capital improvements plan, um, that, that is something that is realistic and, and projects that hopefully we will actually be able to do over the next few years, um, is very exciting to me and we'll probably get into in, in just a little bit. Um, the, the last budgets have been such that to, to simply maintain the services that our residents had, we had to forego many of our capital improvement, uh, projects and they had to continue to get pushed off and pushed off so that we could keep what we had today. So with, with the, the budget that we're going to discuss in just a couple of minutes, the fact that we have a capital improvement project that we can actually move forward on and we're going to be able to move forward on, um, is very exciting to me and it's a great thing for the residents of Berkeley. And I'm very happy that we were able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to point out that this is a $28.1 million plan. This is a 24% increase over last year. 1.7 of this plan will be spent in 1415 and the majority of that will be on infrastructure, specifically roads and sewers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Just a technical question for the finance director. Some of the titles are shaded on here, some are not. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, it is, Your Honor. Um, if it's shaded, that's a new project added to the plan for the current year.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you. If there is no additional discussion on this very important topic, suffice it to say that capital improvements are critical to our future and there is an enormous amount of thought and planning from each department and across the city budgets, uh, figuring out the needs and what needs to be expended in which year going forward. And, um, I thank all of the people who've been involved in putting together this capital improvement plan. We continue to visit this every year and refine it and add on an additional year. So we're always looking out six plus years ahead. So on that thought, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1414?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-1514, matter of approving a resolution of the, of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste.
Is there a motion to approve R-1514?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Mayor Protem Terbrack. Mr. Sessa.
Council, you do recall at our budget hearings, we went through this resolution extensively. And so, um, if you have any questions, obviously we're here to, to, to answer them. Again, th- this resolution is just something that allows us, gives us the authority in order to collect these fees. I won't go into great detail, but as you can see, uh, they vary depending on the size of, of dumpster, trash bag and, and per cart. But, uh, again, we are recommending this for your consideration. The annual residential solid waste collection and disposal fee of $30.20 per year per residential dwelling is what's being recommended, um, in this resolution. And obviously, I won't go into a lot of detail, but we do, um, explain with regards to the size. So those fees may change, in other words, is what I'm trying to say. If, I can have, if we can answer any questions, I'd be happy to, and if the finance director would like to say anything, Mr. Subuda.
Mr. Subuda.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Your Honor. This is an annual fee that, that is placed on the water bill year in and year out. This is for residential, uh, this is a residential charge, $7.55 per quarter, no change. Also this year, what we're going to do is we've memorialized the commercial fees. That was the new change. That's where we spent a lot of time, as, as Mrs. De Sessa has, um, allude, has alluded to. So at the end of the day, what is happening here is if you're a resident, you're still going to see the $7.55 that those dollars will go into the rubbish fund and that will pay for rubbish disposal costs. Generates about $193,000 a year, which is a, which is a big chunk of change for that fund. And then the commercial fees, which we're memorializing, another $26,000 and, uh, that's the new piece for the year. Any questions? Be happy to, to answer those.
Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1514?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Resolution number R-1614, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting charges for water and sewer services effective July 1st, 2014.
Is there a motion to approve R-1614?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa.
You know, Council, as we go through these resolutions, I think about, uh, what the residents, you know, may be wondering when, when we go through these. You know, in order for us to be able to charge our, our residents a certain fee, obviously we make sure that we prepare a budget together that's, uh, that, that fits these fees and, uh, and the council goes through them with us individually. But, uh, in this resolution, we also identify the various fees that we're going to be charging. Again, I'm not going to go through every single item, but it depends on the, uh, on the meter size. Excuse me, on the size of the meter. So if residents are interested in knowing exactly what those various, uh, fees are, they can take a look at this resolution and they can see. Plus, for us as the administrators, you know, we know exactly what we can charge. So that is the purpose of this resolution, so we can identify those costs and those fees. And it, this allows us, as it very adequately states in, in this resolution, so that it allows us to provide safe, adequate water to the users of the system and to assure safe transportation and treatment of sewage discharged into the system by all users of the system. And also so the system, uh, can receive sufficient, uh, total annual revenue in order to ensure the proper operation and maintenance of the system, the development of the system and the preservation of the financial integrity of this system. So this is a very important resolution and our finance director has very adequately put this together. Mr. Subuda, would you like to add anything else?
Thank you, Mrs. De Sessa. Yes, I would. Uh, Your Honor, if I may. As stated earlier, this is a very comprehensive calculation. Basically, what is going to happen here is on July the 1st, 2014, the bill coming out on July 1, 2014, these new rates will go into effect. What will happen is basically the rates will rise approximately 3.4%. Now, what does that mean in dollars? Okay? Basically, we think that it's going to, on a 4,000, uh, per cubic feet usage, which is the average usage here in town, um, so a household will, will spend about $8.42 more for, for water and sewer service. That equates out to about $333 per year or, um, approximately $1,000 per year. So, um, so basically, or $33 increase or $1,000 per year in, in total charges. So again, new rates, 3.4%, $8.42 per quarter, $33.16 per year. And we think the average bill will be around $1,000 per year. Please note that we are the ninth lowest out of 10 in the Saquaw district. Not including Ferndale, which Ferndale is number one, so if we would be nine out of a, we'd be 10 out of 11 if you included Ferndale. Also, um, please note that wholesale costs have gone up 3% to 6%. So what we get from the Drain Commissioner and what we get from Detroit and what we get, um, from Saquaw, the water, the water system, those rates have gone up between 3% and 6%, so we're passing those costs on too. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions? So just then, for clarification purposes, can you tell us again how much the raise is?
Certainly. We, it's going to be on average, three, for the average user, 3.4%. So it would be approximately $8.42 a quarter. Appro, that would be the main number, so $8.
Very good.
Or $33 per year.
Uh, one more clarification, Mr. Subuda, if you could. Of the Saquaw communities and throw Ferndale in there as well.
Sure.
Where do our rates stack up?
Again, we would be numbered, if you include Ferndale, we would be number 10 out of 11. We would be the 10th lowest.
And I, and that's...
Only one community lower than us, that's the point.
Right, that's correct.
There's one community that is slightly lower than us and I, I think it's important for our residents to know that. I understand, um, you know, we're all residents and, and, you know, when, when we get costs that are passed on to us as a municipality, we have to pass those on to our residents. We are not increasing our water rates and have not increased our water rates any more than is absolutely necessary for us to pay our bills and, and the, you know, the bills that we get.
That's correct.
So we are still, and we have been able to maintain exceedingly low water rates in comparison to, to our neighboring communities, Saquaw communities and even some communities that are not a part of Saquaw. Um, and that's a very important thing and it's something for us to be proud of.
Correct.
Uh, in the City of Berkeley.
One other thing that the council and the mayor and council should be aware of and the residents of the community is this year, for the first time, on the sanitary sewer charges that we get, they, um, Detroit has converted over to a fixed fee. In the past, it was always based upon, uh, the number of units that Berkeley would buy from Detroit in, in, in water. Now what it is, is Detroit is coming out saying, we need this amount of money from Berkeley. We need this amount of money from each and every city that is participating in the system and that, that is set fixed now, which is a, which is a big change. So we have to set our rates in order to meet those fixed costs. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please, uh, call the roll on R-1614?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R-1714, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting the city operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014 and ending June 30th, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve R-1714?
Move to approve R-1714.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakle with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa.
You, Council, on, on this item, I think a lot has already been said about our budget and, uh, thanks to the, uh, the three, three mills that have been, uh, approved by our residents back in, uh, 2012, we probably would still be at, uh, at the bare, at just providing bare minimum, uh, not going forward, having to, uh, postpone in many items. You know, one of the things, you know, as your city manager, when we put this budget together, and I mentioned this to you at the meeting, you know, we think, I think of a, a theme or a goal as to where, where we're moving this budget forward. And while, you know, we still are providing, you know, excellent services to our residents, we still have a lot of catch-up to do. But however, even having said that, if it hadn't been for the three mills, we would not be able to do a lot of planning. So unfortunately, this, this coming year, we still have to catch up on some items and we may have to postpone, uh, some of the items that I know some of the directors would have preferred. But, um, but we're not forgetting them, we're planning and in the future, you're going to see, you're going to see many of them being done. So, uh, what I'd like to do now is just to simply go over, and I'm going to take my book here, I won't forget, that when we put our budget together, we did this in accordance with the Michigan Uniform Budget Act and this is public act two of 1968 as amended. And also, we did this in accordance with chapter nine of the Berkeley City Code, which is entitled the General Finance Budget Procedure. And also, we did this in accordance with Chapter Nine of the Berkeley City Code, which is entitled, "The General Finance Budget Procedure." Now, the proposed comprehensive annual budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, this begins July first, two thousand fourteen, and ends June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. And as required by the Uniform Budget Act, each fund within the proposed budget is balanced according to the estimated revenues and expenditures, and as I say in my letter, available fund balances. The total recommended budget of expenditure for the proposed annual budget for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen is about twenty-three point eight million, which this is our current budget. When we compare it to the prior year, we will see an increase of about one point one million, or five point two percent of spending across all the funds. In this letter that I put together with the City Council, I talk about some of the reasons our budget is going up. Yes, the three mills obviously has a big impact, but also, in our city, we've seen a slight increase in our property tax values. Overall, the total taxable value increased by about two point one three percent. There was also a three point three percent increase in residential property tax values. There was a small decline in commercial and industrial property values of about zero point four six and three point nine one percent, respectively, for the July two thousand fourteen fiscal year. Obviously, personal property declined about twenty point zero nine percent, and this is due to the new state law that abolishes personal property tax, personal property tax for any values of over forty thousand or less. And as you know, we discussed this at the budget hearing as well, depending on the outcome of the upcoming August two thousand fourteen ballot proposal, and this is regarding personal property tax, this value could be permanently eliminated. Again, it depends. But here again, thanks to the approved three-mill operating levy that was passed back in August of two thousand fourteen, due to the increase in the residential tax values, the city is able to continue to fund basic operational needs and maintain our city road network. Now, just to give you a brief overview of what our proposed budget for this upcoming year includes, we're looking at continuing to provide essential city services, such as the general maintenance of municipal facilities and major infrastructure, replacement of outdated unsafe equipment, improvements to operational costs that relate to wholesale water, sewers, and stormwater services within the Water Service Fund. And this also includes the George W. Coon Drainage District debt payment, rubbish tipping and collection fees within the Solid Waste Fund. We're also going to be able to pay our road bond debt payments, including the Twelve Mile and the Coolidge Intersection Loan Debt Payment. Also, the levy will allow the city to address the following very critical road and facility improvements. And one of the major projects is the rehabilitation of the Coolidge Highway from Twelve Mile to Webster, continued maintenance on major and local streets, park improvements at J.C. Park, some building improvements at our library, and we're also looking to phase in LED lights throughout our city. Now, those are the primary, the major items within our budget. But we did give you a presentation at our budget hearing, and this presentation is available to our residents on our website, which is www.berkleymish.org. You can go on our website, and you can take a look at the presentation, and it goes into more depth on some of these items that we've talked about. Now, when this budget is approved by the City Council, at that time, then the City Staff puts it together, and we will make sure that this budget document is on the website as well, so that the residents can view it. And you'll be able to go into a lot more detail than what I've just said. So with that, City Council, before I do, let me just turn it over to our Finance Director, because obviously, he spent a lot of time in preparing this item. Mr. Subuda, would you like to add anything else?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mrs. De Sessa, Your Honor, Council. The last point I would like to make here is on the tax rate itself. Obviously, tax value went up one point six percent. Please note that the rates were rolled back for the headly amendment, and basically, the average tax bill will go up about twenty dollars or a dollar sixty-seven per month. And that would be for the city piece only. I can't account for the other units, I don't get involved in their calculations. But when you're looking at your city piece of your bill, to pay for services, you're looking at twenty dollars or a dollar sixty-seven per month. Please note that state equalized values, which is the value of your home, okay? That has really, really jumped up. We've gone between twelve and fifteen percent, depending on what part of town you are in, and that is very, very, very good news. Now, we can't, we're not calculating any taxes on SEV, but the value of your home is going up, and that is a wonderful, wonderful sign that things are starting to come back. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Sessa.
And Council, I mean, I know it's before you, and you take a look at this, you're looking at this document, but our residents out there may not know this, but if they go to our website, and they go to the City Agenda, they'll be able to see specifically exactly what the levy is for each of the funds, in a lot more detail. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Any other discussion, Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to thank the residents, as Ms. Boucher De Sessa alluded to a little earlier, for having the foresight to understand what position we were in, and having seventy percent of those that voted come out and give us this opportunity to pass such a great budget. I also want to thank everyone involved, especially the Finance Director, and Lori and Sue also, because I know they worked hard on this, and all the directors, and the judge, because it was really, it was a pleasure to go through this budget. It was comforting and educating, and I think everyone walked away, you know, comfortable with their decisions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
She said it all.
Basically, sums it up.
Yep.
Budget is, Steve has it here.
Yes.
It is, and it's an award-winning document as well. The work that has gone into this budget continues the record of accomplishments over the period of the last several years, when the budget process and final document has received recognition from professional groups across the country, and Canada, actually, as well.
That is correct.
Canada is included as well. And so, we thank everybody who worked so hard to make this such a fine document. Not everybody agrees with everything that's in there, because that's the nature of a budget, that it has to be give and take, and this is not like Burger King, you can't have it your way. You have to argue your case and make a case for the expenditure of taxpayers' money. It always needs to be expended wisely, and I believe this budget does so, and I congratulate everybody involved. And on that note, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on R seventeen fourteen.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number ten?
Resolution number R eighteen fourteen, matter of authorizing the execution of the Public Unit Master Signature Authorization Agreement between the City of Berkeley and Flagstar Bank to provide the necessary authorizations for deposits, withdrawals, and other basic bank business on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is it a motion to approve R eighteen fourteen?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
Council, you know our City Clerk, our former City Clerk, Cheryl Prince, not retired. She moved on, and we have our new City Clerk, Ms. Annette Boucher. And we need your permission to include her as part of our master signature. And I think the most important thing out of all this that the Council should take is that this amended bank agreement will allow our new City Clerk to countersign checks as required by the City Charter. And this action will also confirm an important, very important internal control for the disbursement of funds on behalf of the City of Berkeley. So that's very important, Your Honor, and we are recommending this resolution for your consideration. Have you answered any questions?
Are there any questions, discussions on this topic? Councilmember Boucher?
Quick comment, City Manager, comment on internal controls. And for those citizens out there that are aware of what internal controls are, we have a very strict internal control policy here. Having been one that worked with internal controls in previous life, I went through a lot of them in great detail, and everything looks good, I just want citizens to know that we're staying on top of that.
Very good. Yeah, pro temp, Terbrack?
Just to add on a little bit to people who may not have been in internal controls in a former life, basically, what Councilmember Blanchard and Mr. Sessa were talking about are checks and balances. Checks to make sure, not checks in terms of writing checks, checks with a Q, to make sure that people who are expending money on behalf of the City of Berkeley are doing so in agreement with somebody else, so that you can't just write a check to somebody, and we wouldn't know about that until it was cash. We have very strict protocol in place to make sure that any money that is expended is expended in a way that we have a number of people who are verifying it before that happens. So it's very important for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R eighteen fourteen?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eleven?
Motion number M twenty-three fourteen, matter of approving the NIPA purchase of a sewer pipeline inspection system and vehicle build-out at a total cost of one hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety cents to Jack Dohanyi Companies of Northville, Michigan. The expenditure is chargeable to account number five nine two dash five three six dash nine eight five dash zero zero zero.
Is it a motion to approve M twenty-three fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I know you've read in this report that it's been provided to you, there's a lot of detail in it, and I know that our Public Works Director, Mr. Derek Schuler, he has done a tremendous job. This is a budgeted item in this year's budget. We have about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars currently budgeted, so it's going to be under budget. But here to explain the process and the recommendation and why we're doing this, this is a very important piece of equipment, is our director. So, Mr. Schuler, would you give us a brief summary?
Sure, thank you very much, good evening. Before you tonight, this is sewer inspection equipment, and essentially, this is the equipment that we use to videotape our sewer lines, our fifty-plus miles of sewer lines within the city. And it's a very important piece of equipment, both from a proactive standpoint as well as of a reactive standpoint. We're able to take this camera and crawler down the sewer lines for up to a thousand feet, several runs of sanitary pipe, and film the line, find problems before they become a major problem, as well as react to issues in the field if there is some sort of blockage. So it's a very important piece of equipment. We've spent several hours, countless hours, over the past eight months, looking at different types of sewer equipment, and we took the pool, narrowed it down to three specific pieces of equipment, and then narrowed that down to one. We did come before you previously, last month, to purchase the actual chassis and the van body that is for this equipment. We were able to take advantage of the governmental pricing for those, so we were able to save some money there and buy that particular piece on its own. We expect delivery of that unit actually sometime this week. It has been made, and we're just waiting for the delivery of that. And so what we're going to do is outfit the back of that unit with this sewer equipment. I've attached some photos in my packet, I hope that's been helpful to sort of illustrate the old piece of equipment, which was the nineteen eighty-five Chevy van, as well as the two thousand three sewer camera, which you can sort of see from those photos. And as you can tell, we're moving up and getting a much better piece of equipment in the end. What I view is the premium camera system, probably in the world, we're going to be able to get that unit at a very reasonable cost, in my mind. So we're buying a premium piece of equipment. Service is an important factor in this, and was a strong consideration. The other competitors involved had different service locations, you know, really throughout the country, and we've been working with this company who's been servicing our current camera, which isn't a model that they sell for several years, and has done a fine job. And we have that trust relationship that we can get proper service on our unit, so that was also an important factor, as was cost, as was making sure we were comparing apples to apples. And you will see by my matrix there, the time that we spent trying to make sure we were comparing apples to apples with all three of these different finalists. So we believe we've selected the best unit for the City of Berkeley, and I'm very excited to finally bring this before you, to move forward and to get this camera equipment. Obviously, the Saw Grant, which we're all very excited about, is right around the corner, it's happening, and this piece of equipment will be instrumental in doing a lot of the Saw Grant work. So the pieces of all this came together very well, as far as timing is concerned. I did want to mention, the software was not part of this package, and the reason for that is because of the Saw Grant, and we're looking to utilize the Saw Grant and then make a determination on what software package that we will use for the actual camera that's videoing the line. So I'll be back before you at a later date to go through that as part of the Saw Grant. So, and we will be selling our old camera van and equipment, either via auction, online auction, I think might be the most appropriate route for us for it. It does work, it's obviously been repaired several times, but it is functional. So we're hoping to also auction that off in the near future. Once we take delivery, make sure everything is up to par, we will auction off that vehicle and the camera system. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. The cost of one hundred and forty-one eight nineteen, does that include installing all the equipment in the new truck? Or is that something that you're going to do yourself, or?
It includes the full installation of everything, that is correct. So Northville, the plant in Northville, will build this when we deliver the chassis in the box in full. And this is following a similar bid that recently went through for the City of Birmingham. City of Auburn Hills has also recently purchased a very similar piece of equipment. So our build-out will be rolling alongside those communities as well.
Very good. Excellent. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I just want to point out once again, we're replacing a vehicle that is twenty-nine years old. So when we talk about spending wisely, that's something we take to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no further questions for Mrs. Schuler, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M twenty-three fourteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number twelve?
Motion number M twenty-four fourteen, matter of appointing the Berkeley Public Works Director, Derek Schuler, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and Finance Director, David Subuda, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority Saquaw Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand fourteen, and to instruct the City Clerk to send a copy of this motion to the Saquaw Board.
Is it a motion to approve twenty-four fourteen?
Motion to approve twenty-four fourteen.
Support by, motion was moved by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessa.
Council, this is a formality that Saquaw is asking all of our Saquaw communities to comply with. I'm pretty sure they'll be asking the Saquaw side pretty soon as well. We do this at least once a year to make sure there's any changes or anything like that. But again, we are recommending representative from the City of Berkeley, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler, to act as our key representative, and as an alternate, our Finance Director, Mr. David Subuda. I think this is a good team, they've done a good job, and I certainly would recommend it.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, then, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on M twenty-four fourteen.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item thirteen?
Motion number M twenty-five fourteen, matter of the appointment of Toby Vaught to the Historical Committee, with terms expiring July two thousand seventeen.
Is it a motion to approve M twenty-five fourteen?
Motion to approve M twenty-five fourteen.
Moved by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmembers Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, you know, it always gives me a great pleasure to introduce these individuals, especially to the Historical Committee. I know that, you know, I sometimes complain a little, because usually, when people look at which committee to join, they always want to join the Historical Committee. And I think that's, you know, I'm going to say it out loud, Councilmember Baker has added so much, so much life to this committee, and the books, and, oh my... and, and, oh my God, and of course, uh, Jeff Tong and, and Sue Richardson, they're amazing. So, I guess I don't blame anybody wanting to be the, of the fun committee. But just to go, uh, give you guys a little bit of background on, on, on Ms. Boyd here, uh, she is a curator, uh, for the city of Detroit, and she works for the Historical Society there. Um, she has a tremendous, uh, work history, uh, working with the, uh, city of Detroit's Historical Society. She's been an educator and a curator, and she's also, um, worked in, I think, I think I'm looking, if I hope I'm looking at this right, uh, Farmington Hills as well, the, their museum out there. Uh, she has a master's degree in history, museum studies. She has, uh, a U- United States resident, and she has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for thirty-five years. Uh, when asked the question about what are her interests and qualifications for this appointment, uh, she states that she's worked in museums for twelve years. She also has a history degree from Oakland University and a master's degree from Cooperstown, uh, graduate, uh, program. So, with that, Your Honor, we are recommending this individual for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion on this person who is volunteering and is eminently qualified for, for this important role in the city and joining a very active committee?
Yes.
This, the Historical Committee is a very active committee, uh, from the folks who, who wrote the, uh, history of the city and, and all of the other members, going back over the years who have collected the material and the information and the photographs and so on. We're indebted to all of them going back through the generations for their contribution to preserving our history. And this lady now joining them adds, uh, fresh insight and ideas, and, uh, it'll be good for the, for that committee. On that, uh, note, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M twenty-five fourteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Boucher, who should be first?
Blanchard?
Councilmember Blanchard.
Oh. Uh, what I wanna talk about a little bit is the upcoming Lids for Kids at a Berkeley Art Bash. Uh, for the residents that don't know, Lids for Kids is a program that's been going on for a number of years in the city. It's funded by some of the Public Safety's projects, including one which went on today, which is the golf outing, and I won't talk anything about that 'cause I'm not a golfer. I'll let one of the other golfers on, uh, Council talk about that. But the Lids for Kids program is a program where we bring kids in and their, with their bicycles, and if they have a bike helmet, we help make sure it's fitted properly. If they don't have a bicycle helmet, we give them one and make sure it's fitted properly, and explain the safety of bicycle operations. And it's a wonderful program. They have l- recreation things for the kids to do there, so they have a little fun and they, and they learn a little bit. So, if there are any parents out there that, on June fourteenth, bring their kids up here to the fire station parking lot, and we'll run them through the Lids for Kids program, get them on a safe helmet, and hopefully they'll be safe for this coming summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Um, well, first of all, the, um, Beautification Committee, uh, they have been very busy. Um, they're going to have a table at the Art Bash on June fourteenth also. They've, uh, th- they're going to have literature there about the committee and also about the tree planting program. Um, they have not set dates for the, uh, Fire Hydrant painting. Uh, as you know, or you may know, they painted, uh, several of them close to Woodward Avenue, uh, last summer before the Dream Cruise, and, um, now they, they're going to embark on that. And they could really use some help. So, if you, um, uh, would like to help them, call the city and leave your name, and we'll, and they'll get it to them. Um, the bus stop up here, they are working on plantings around the bus stop, and, and within a few weeks, it should look very nice and very, you know, really nice. Um, just as a little highlight, a couple of weeks ago, Consumers Energy di- uh, did some work at the bus stop, and they were removing an old gas pipe that, um, uh, the Beautification Committee contacted them regarding repair work at the site. And, um, instead of them repairing it, they gave the Beautification Committee a cash settlement of five hundred and sixty dollars to repair it for them, since they were going to plant things there anyway. So, I thought that was very nice. And, um, the library, uh, board, just a minute. Matt Church, our librarian, wanted me to mention this. Uh, Linda Haunt, uh, Hunt, author of Sweet, Sweet Delicious Pies, Eat Pie, Love Life, is going to be at the library on, uh, Wednesday, June fourth, at six-thirty PM. And it sounds like a, uh, wonderful program. So, if you want to sign up, call the library and, um, or stop by the adult reference de- desk to register for this program, which is free. And, um, also, the Four Seasons, again, this year, did some plantings around the library. So, please thank them when you go in to buy any of, uh, plantings for your own house, and thank them on behalf of the library in Berkeley. And Berkeley Days, Taste of Berkeley and Berkeley Days was absolutely wonderful. Um, Mayor O'Dwyer could've done a little better with the weather. But, we'll forgive him this time. Okay, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick things. Uh, first, um, yet another, uh, uh, time when the city of Berkeley is in the, uh, in the headlines, uh, again, more good news. As many of you may have heard, uh, Berkeley was recently, um, appointed as the number twelve in the ranking of the best places for home ownership in the state of Michigan. Number twelve across the whole state's pretty cool. Uh, that ranking was based on availability, affordability, and the growth rate of the community. And so, when you factor all those conditions together, and the fact that, uh, the entire state, Berkeley's number twelve, is a, is a terrific, uh, uh, additional affirmation of the, of the quality that, uh, that this community has, and, and it is a great result of, of the residents and the businesses and, uh, the quality services and infrastructure that we are able to and are now positioned to offer as a result of the, the budget process. Uh, so, congrats again to Berkeley. Uh, and speaking of the budget processes, this was a big step forward for us here. Uh, as we know, this, this budgetary, um, initiative is an annual cycle, uh, to fund our, our budget, and it's, it's a municipal operations kind of thing, but it's really a, a statement of how we fund our priorities and how we fund our values. You know, when we think about what Berkeley stands for and what we care about, that's the kinds of decisions that we're really talking about. And we mentioned earlier about, you know, the trade-offs and, and the notion of compromise, and that's really what, what this is about. And so, uh, you've heard earlier, and if you haven't had a chance to inspect this more detail, and in more detail, please, uh, see the city manager or the library, uh, to review, uh, the budget more detail. What I'd just like to celebrate is the, the way in which this budget was put together, again, with, with a high-quality conversations, a strong amount of inquiry and advocacy across the different departments to ensure that we collectively do what's best for the, for the residents and for the, for the, for the, uh, the community. And I think that's absolutely fantastic. Just, uh, terrific stuff. So, my, again, my congratulations to, uh, to the city manager, finance director, and all the department heads, and everyone for, um, contributing and making this a, a great process as well as a great budget. Errol Ozin is an American writer, American author, and he once wrote, "You Can't Understand a City Without Using Its Public Transportation System." Again, you can't understand a city without using its public transportation system. Now, as we heard earlier, there's, there's probably not a whole lot to understand about us since we don't really have a good regional system here, but I think we've taken an important step, uh, today, and with the student committee vote tomorrow, on the, uh, the, the culmination of, of over almost three years' worth of work, actually, leading up to even the formation of the study. There was a tremendous amount of work around regional, uh, collaboration and partnership, not only with Berkeley, but our neighbors to the north and south, all eleven communities, uh, working together to, to even begin that journey, which we just heard the conclusion of, or the next stage of, a little bit earlier, uh, today. Uh, again, this is back to reflecting our values, our, our, our respect and appreciation for the, the variety and diversity of residents that we have, the needs that they have, the quality that the businesses have to offer, the recreation and, and other opportunities that we have to, um, to get it from point A to point B and give us more options and choice, uh, in doing so safely and, uh, and affordably. So, uh, so as we turn the corner here, I'd, I'd get, again, like to extend my gratitude and thanks to not only this council and, and those that came before us here, uh, but, um, all of the volunteers that have put in countless hours of research and, and advocacy on behalf of this, and our regional partners as well, up and down the Woodward corridor, who made a great example of the ways that, uh, that not just within a city, but across the, across the region can really come together around a shared objective. And that's something that we should all be very happy about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items this evening. First off, uh, as was mentioned, I wanna thank Denise Brainerd and Lisa Zimmerman and the rest of the Berkeley Days Committee, as well as all the community organizations that also, uh, play a role in, in making Berkeley Days the success, um, that it is. Again, you know, i- it seems like it's a one weekend a year and all of the events that go, go with it, but there is so much planning that goes into something like this, and it is extremely, uh, tiring work, and, and we really appreciate everything that they do so that we can celebrate, um, Berkeley. And, um, it's not just the, the carnival, you know, the midway anymore. It, it's gotten a lot bigger with the Taste of Berkeley and, and many other events. Um, and, and it's a fantastic time to be a resident. Sadly, uh, there was no softball game this year, and I had nothing to do with that. Shocking, I was not, it just, it just happened that way.
Yeah.
Um, I have no control over the weather. Apparently, that's your domain, so. Thank you for that. If you handled that for me, I, I appreciate that. Uh, speaking of weather, we did have tremendous weather today, um, for the public safety golf outing that Councilmember Blanchard mentioned. Um, and, and again, you know, another one of those events, um, that, that Sergeant Hadfield really spearheads and inputs together to raise money so that we can run the Lids for Kids program and some other programs here. Um, yeah, I think he said somewhere a hundred and twenty or so golfers, uh, were there today. I mean, it was, it was, it was a huge, huge event. Again, and, uh, something else, that there's so much work that goes on behind the scenes to get sponsors and, 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 you know, just booking the course and everything that goes into, um, this event, and, and it was a fantastic day. Um, you know, the, the scores may not have been where my team wanted them, and, and, you know, I look at the mayor and, and city attorney for that, and the chief has snuck out conveniently now. Uh, but, but we had a great time, and, and it's for a good cause, and, and it could not have been, um, a better day, and I'm very pleased that I was able to be a part of that. Um, a comment on, on the budget, um, you know, as, as we've heard, uh, this, this is a budget that, it's not an easy process to, to do, to, to come up with, um, with something that makes sense and, and is fiscally sound, not just to what, you know, we want or what the department heads want, but, but for what is best for the residents of the city. Um, and I'm enormously proud, not because I, you know, sat in the meetings and, and ultimately I'm gonna pass this, but I, I'm enormously plu- uh, proud to be a resident of the city of Berkeley, um, and, and to know that, as, as Councilmember Baker mentioned, where we prioritize things and what is important to us as residents. And passing the three-mil levy, um, in, in two thousand and twelve, wa- was something that is very important to our residents, and now that we're, we're seeing in this budget, um, the rewards, I suppose, of, of being able to plan ahead and, and to make very prudent fiscal decisions and, and what is in the best interest of all of our residents. And it hasn't been like that, uh, the last few years. Um, you know, the budget process has been where can we cut, where can we cut, where can we cut, and how can we continue to maintain what we have without having any real eye on the future or progress, simply because we couldn't. Now, we have that. We are gonna be able to progress. Infrastructure was, was one of the things that, that was mentioned. That's something that we're really going to be able to, to look at, and there's a, a number of, uh, other areas where we can progress, and that's because of the residents and because of their, their faith in, in city administration and, and this council. Um, so, I, I'm proud to be somebody who was able to go over that budget, but more importantly, I'm just proud to be a resident of the city of Berkeley. And on a final note, I feel like I need to, uh, apologize to any members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee who may have been offended by Jane calling the Historical Committee the fun committee.
Oops.
I mean, Josephine, you're, you're here, Ms. Brewer, you're, you're very well aware, but we are a very fun committee, I want you to know. And if you don't believe me, I, I just, just wait until, uh, what, June twenty-fifth, and, and Summer Fest officially rolls out and, and continues throughout the summer. You must've forgotten about Winter Fest and all the other great things, uh, that happens as a member of that committee. Certainly, I, I kid, Councilmember Baker, you have a very fun committee too. I believe, I understand that. Uh, but, but there is a lot coming up, uh, in terms of parks and recreation as we move closer to the summer, so please pay attention to the department, uh, for all the great things that will be happening. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to express my gratitude for the incredible rapid transit presentation we saw tonight. It was lucid and clear and informative, and I was delighted with it. Um, wanna remind people that June fourteenth, again, is the Art Bash. It's gonna be fun. We're working on some interesting things on Robina, so make sure you stop in and take a look at what we've got going there. Um, it's lovely to see spring has finally come. Um, just like the SEV is up, all of our little plants are poking their heads out of the darkness as well. Um, enjoy the weather, and, that's it. Go on.
Thank you. Mr. Kadakal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, I saw a headline earlier today that Burger King is taking away the slogan, "Have it your way." So, not even at Burger King can you have it your way anymore. Um, Berkeley Days, I can't say enough about the fun and, and just what a joy it was. Um, from the horseshoes that Councilmember Blanchard and I carried the team to a tie, I won't mention any names, Mayor or Mayor Protem, that didn't succeed as well during that game, but, um...
You can't beat up on our, like, that's so nice, to let them win.
But, uh, but it, it was a lot of fun, and then I was challenged by Denise Brainerd to go on a couple of rides with her, and I ended up going on the Fireball, which is a roller coaster that you hang upside down, and then the Demon Drop where you drop ninety feet.
You did that?
No big deal. Friday was a very special day for someone very special to all of us, and that's, I'm gonna call her our very own Josephine Brewer, as she was selected as the Citizen of the Year this year for Berkeley Days. I'm very proud of you, and I can't think of anyone more well-deserving than you. Also, uh, to Sawyer Fuller, uh, Funeral Home, I wanna congratulate them as they received the humanitarian award. So, that was really good. Um, Taste of Berkeley, I can't thank everyone enough that helped, participated, sponsors. This was our biggest crowd. We had two hundred people. We had great participants, and we raised five thousand dollars that are going to the kids for the Berkeley Huntington Youth Assistance. And, uh, now I guess I have another goal to top that next year, but, uh, that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa?
Oh, my goodness, where'd I begin? Um, encourage residents to please join the Beautification Committee. They're doing an awesome job, even though they're a small group. I know that Council, uh, Councilmember Stedman already mentioned many of the items, but, uh, just today, they came into my office and, 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 uh, the city planner and I went over their proposed beautification plan, and they're gonna be starting on that pretty soon. So, um, it, it's, you'll see some, you'll see some, uh, something that they've done very, very soon. So, I'm very, very grateful to them. So, please, if anybody is interested in joining the Beautification Committee, just go to our website. You can download the, uh, the application and, yeah, either come, come by and drop it off, or send it to me via email. So, other thing that I'd like to mention is, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Denise Brainerd for all her work on, on Berkeley Days. It, it was so much fun this year. Um, there, there were a lot of individuals out there attending the, uh, the events, uh, good, good people everywhere. So, I did admire her crown, though. I guess that's something that she's gonna be wearing. Oh, tiara, I apologize. Tiara, okay, tiara. And she, she actually went through the, through that, uh, thing with her tiara on?
Yes.
You didn't fall or anything? Hmm, okay. So, so, thank you. Thank you very much for, for all her work and, and for all the members of the, uh, of the Berkeley Days Committee. Uh, amazing. Um, also on the transportation, you know, I know tonight you went through this, uh, through this program. Um, again, I, I can't even, even begin to, uh, to thank and name all the people. Um, but one person in particular that, that's on this council, and this is Councilman Baker. I know that he was one of the, um, founders, or, or beginners, I should say, uh, that went out and worked with their committee to diligently put this together, and I know how hard that was. And, uh, and also with our city planner, who attended our meetings and, and, and kept our, our city, uh, informed as well. So, uh, those two individuals in our city did a great job. So, thank you. Thank you very much for all your work, Councilman. When we talk about the budget now, I'm just gonna change subject here real quick. You know, I, I appreciate, you know, you thanking the staff, and, and I think this year, uh, more than any other year, uh, our staff was in tune to just about everything. I think when we went to the, to, uh, budget hearings for the city council, you know, we were prepared and, and we were ready. And, uh, but, on a personal note, I'd also like to thank Mayor and City Council for your work as well, because even though we may sit there and put the numbers together, you're the ones that have to approve this plan, and you're the ones that have to... And you're the ones that have to make sure that, that whatever it is we do, that it is, it is in mind with what, what is best for the city of Berkeley. You are the ones who go through each of the line items one at a time. I know our finance director is the taskmaster of that. But you do go through each page and you go through each line. And I cannot thank you enough for your work. I mean, the residents of the city of Berkeley, they, they will, they will never know how, how much time you put into this. And, and I thank you. Thank you for your time. We couldn't do it without you. We're, I think we're a great team, and I'm, I'm very privileged to be part of it. So thank you, Your Honor. Lastly, to the Taste of Berkeley, amazing, amazing event this year. Good, good food. I, I, I think I was stuck. I didn't even go all the way. Great food, a lot of great businesses in Berkeley. Councilmember Kadakal, thank you for all your work, sir. I know that you've put a lot of time in this. And it was part of, of making this, this event very successful. So thank you, sir. Thank you for that. You know, our city is continuing to grow. One of our, one of our businesses in our city is, is doing some major renovations in our community. I hope some of you will go out there and, and take a look at it. I think the mayor and I were discussing this, and I was talking about doggy in the window. I, I'm so sorry I didn't get to go to the opening on Sunday. They had a little bit of a groundbreaking. But this morning, I, I went in there and I, and I peeked, and I got a chance to get a, a tour. And wow. So anyone who has a, a, a dog, especially dogs, their pets will be, you know, cared for and pampered and well taken care of. This is an amazing state of the art facility, and I encourage everyone to, to go take a look at it. And I guess, I know we're in a hurry here, but, but my friend over there, Josephine, I'll never forget the first time I met you. And I'm not surprised at all that you are our Citizen of the Year. That I am, I'm not surprised at all. It's probably a title that's long overdue. I, I'll never forget it. We, we, I think we were just at a council meeting or somewhere, we were just talking, and, and you, and I wanted you to join a committee. And, and you said, "But no one listens to someone like me." And, no, that, that's not the case. And I said, "No, no, you need to join." And, and I think she's, uh, she's a part of our team as well, and we don't know what we do without her. So congratulations, Josephine, and thank you for all your work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the council, the vice-assessor, the staff, and particularly Lori Fielder and Sue Redden, Brian Bemis. They put up with me. They, uh, they, uh.
They put up with him.
They put up with me.
Underline that in a minute.
They do, they do. But, but I want to say this is a rock solid budget. This is my ninth, this is my ninth budget here at Berkeley. This is a rock solid budget, and everything went very smoothly, went, went very well. And couldn't have done it without your leadership and without the department head's leadership. And it turned out really nice. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for letting me join you in the public safety outing today. It was a wonderful day. I also just wanted to, I learned this afternoon and want to extend my congratulations and best wishes, good luck to Mayor Protem Terbrack and his wife on the imminent arrival of his third child. Above and beyond the duty, being here tonight. Today's the day, as I understand it.
Very good. Thank you. It was a lot of words of gratitude to staff, council, department heads, volunteers, residents. And I just, listening to all of them and listening to the progress that we have made as a city, captured in some ways by Councilmember Baker's reference to being number 12 now in the state of Michigan with regard to affordability and desirability to, to live. It makes me enormously proud to be mayor of this city and to have a budget that is rock solid, that expresses the values and desires of the people of this city. And that comes about because of the level of collaboration across the board. Members of council, each bringing their own talent, skill, insight, passion, and willingness to compromise. I can't say enough, I mean, when I go to other cities and, and other communities and hear some of the challenges they deal with, I'm so proud of the collabora, collaboration that we have, and our city is better for it, and I thank all of you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadakal, support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadakal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.